Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. This time I'll call the meeting to order. First item of business will be item number two, which is a moment of silence. Let's take a moment. Amen. Next item is the adoption of the agenda, our council. What are your wishes?
I make a motion we adopt it.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion, changes, deletions? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. I might make a comment at this time that Mr. McQueen is not able to be here in person tonight and he is on the phone and you will hear him occasionally on the microphone over here. The next item of business is approval of the minutes from the December eighth regular meeting and the closed session meeting. What are your wishes on that council?
We approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any changes or deletions that need to be made? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. At this time, we come to that point in the meeting where we have comments from attendees and I believe one that we do have Mr. Gerard Morrison on the phone with us tonight who wishes to make some comments.
I'm calling.
Oh.
Hey, is this Mr. Morrison?
Getting connected here.
Uh, this is Matt Christian. I'm, uh, we're at the Hamlet City Council meeting. We're at the portion of the meeting for a public comment and you had signed up to speak in public comments. So I'm gonna put you on speakerphone for your comment.
Thank you, man. How you doing? Happy New Year, brother.
It's been good so far and, uh, I just wanna make sure everybody can hear you well. So, um, if I interrupt you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You're good to go.
Can I do a test first?
Yeah.
There you go. We got you.
You're good. Go right ahead.
Testing one, two.
You're good. Go right ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody, and Happy New Year and Happy New You. And my name is Gerard Morrison. Um, three things that I wanted to mention tonight. One, um, during this stage of, well, first of all, I wanna thank everybody for their service and sacrifice, especially during COVID. Secondly, uh, well, I just wanna just jump right in and, um, time is limited. But I've been concerned that, uh, during this, uh, pandemic, that we wanted to reach, um, elected officials. I'm gonna look on the website, see if it's been updated, but I didn't see, I see names and pictures for most. But I, I'm concerned and folks have been asking me, how do they contact elected officials? You know, some wanna come, you know, go through the city, but they're like, by the time they go through those menus, they're like, they want to talk directly to the reps. So I strongly suggest that on the website, we update that with ways for the public to reach folks, especially during an information age and a pandemic. And then, uh, that's where elected positions definitely and for the appointed boards which are, uh, eligible. You know, I talked with Gail and some, she told me something, um, it wouldn't be, I think, legal or something like that for some folks to be contacted. That's one. The other part, uh, I was wondering as far as boards and commissions, are there term limits on the local level? Cause I got asked that and I, I wa- I wasn't informed enough to know about that. I thought, I didn't think so, and to contact the, uh, school of government. And thirdly, uh, something I've been pondering the last few years is district, a district system. So if somebody, especially folks who've spent some years on the boards, can speak to some of the pros and cons and of a district system within the local municipalities. And that means, you know, I've seen them work more in, uh, medium and large cities. Greensboro I know best outside of Hamlet, but I notice, you know, they have a few at-large members, then there are members who have districts that they're responsible for. I think it gives more accountability when you have that and the citizens actually get, uh, better opportunities because they got folks they can go to specifically. And then, you know, the hot potato, and they're still around, uh, it improves communications, which is always the goal. Same for an aforementioned statement I made about being able to reach the elected officials, uh, phone or text or whatever their preference is. And in that spirit, folks even running for office locally, uh, that way is more economically feasible. And a lot of votes are pretty much, you know, across the board, almost unanimous for all the municipalities, uh, kind of lower below. So I was thinking, you know, I wanted to quiz ourselves in this time of reflection during the pandemic. How can we improve ourselves as well as our community? So I think that would be a step toward it. And lastly, I was wondering when the Gold Leaf Foundation did some meetings, a lot of us attended. Were there too, but one of the things I suggested when they gave the $2 million to the county for infrastructure and things to promote economic and, uh, community growth. I recall saying in their, uh, requested a friendly amendment, be added to the, uh, Public Works and Sewer Committee. And my thinking then was since we're gonna be opening the ground to lay, you know, the pipes and infrastructure, let's also lay some fiber optic cable. And this was around, uh, that was during Obama's first term. So I was wondering, you know, during the shutdown, one of the mayors for the municipality was like, no, we don't want that. And you'll see now, if we would've been more visionary, while, you know, the students and the localities and small businesses, et cetera, would have Wi-Fi access and we can get things done better. And I told about the example with, we got it in the authority of North Carolina, Rocky Mount, used it for a model city. And the federal government during that time, SCC, had good money to be distributed to the localities for fiber optics and, uh, infrastructure for Wi-Fi. So that they could spur more economic and community growth. So I was wondering, I wanted to share those ideas and get some feedback and thanks for the time and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Gerard.
And, uh, Mayor thanks you as well and we'll talk again soon.
Please make sure to actually get some feedback, because they're just passing it around, please.
Sure. You get, you bet. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Mike. Have a good one.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
Yes, sir.
Next item of business, moving into new business, is a public hearing on the application to USDA for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And at this time, I will, uh, open the, uh, considerations on that. Do you have something now, Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, um, would like to invite, uh, prior to any public comment, um, representatives from LKC, Adam Keiker and Rob McIntyre, uh, to just give a brief overview of where we're at with the project and, uh, just kinda set the stage for any questions that may come. And, uh, they're here to, uh, kinda answer any questions that you or the public may have.
Gentlemen, we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, members of council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Yes, yes, sir.
Hold on just a minute.
Mayor Barrett and Bayless, before we get into the substantive portion of the new business, I'd just like to remind the board that given, uh, that Mayor Proton McQueen is attending via simultaneous communication. This is a remote meeting under, uh, 166A 19.24. So each member of the board, uh, before making a motion or a second or offering comment should identify themselves. I understand that that's maybe practically unnecessary, given that the majority of the board is here, but it is a requirement of the remote meeting statutes. Um, we should also, any votes taken should be done by roll call vote. Again, I understand that it's not necessarily practical, but it is a requirement of these statutes.
Very good. Thank you. We will do that. Uh, gentlemen?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Uh, we have, uh, met with you before, but I'm Adam Keiker with LKC. This is Rob McIntyre, uh, our project manager. Uh, what I wanted to do prior to, uh, any, uh, public comment was just to give a real brief rundown of the project and where we are. As you may remember from the last time we were with you, uh, this project is motivated through regulatory challenges relative to the flow that your, the sewer flow that your wastewater plant experiences, uh, as compared to the capacity of that facility. And what we are seeking to do with this project is to increase the, uh, the permitted capacity of that facility to take it from a capacity of 1 million gallons per day to a capacity of 2 million gallons per day. Uh, I'm happy to address other details out of respect for your time. I'll just maybe wait for questions at, uh, Mayor, uh, if that's fair. But, uh, the plan is to request funding from USDA Rural Development. Our team is, uh, is well on our way in that application process with the help of your staff, uh, in getting all the forms together. We have met, uh, not ju- not just with Mr. Christian, but your operations and your wastewater plant staff. And I think we have a really good plan, uh, for how we're gonna tackle this. Uh, but a, a critical piece of the USDA funding process is to accept any public comment, uh, or, uh, document that there was public comment received. And I believe that's what, uh, is happening this evening. And Mayor, with that, uh, I'll step aside. Uh, we're here to answer any questions if you may have, uh, but I'll step aside and allow, uh, for public comment.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for? Okay. If there's no further on that, we'll, uh, close the public hearing. And we will take under consideration the LKC, uh, letter of agreement, which you have a copy of, the dealing with wastewater treatment improvements. Uh, total project cost is 13,589,600 dollars. And, uh, what are your wishes on this letter as far as approving it? Any motion?
Some move that we approve the letter three.
Abby Covington makes a motion.
Jesse McQueen, a last second.
Okay. Uh, Jesse McQueen, second. Any further? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed likewise.
You have to do a roll call.
Jesse?
Jesse McQueen, aye.
Oscar Sellers, aye.
Eda Martin, aye.
Maury Stewart, uh.
Abby Covington, aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Mayor, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Council, the next item that we have tonight deals with, uh, order granting a special use permit. Sometime ago, we approved the, uh, portion of the plant out near the Coca-Cola plant out there to put in so- solar, uh, operation. And they have come back now and said that they're, uh, essentially not gonna use the Hamlet portion of the ETJ to put the older pa- solar panels in, but they're gonna put in a, uh, um, catch basin to catch runoff from water. And in order for them to do it, we would have to pass a special use for it. And, uh, do we have someone here tonight that wishes to speak?
Yes, sir. I invite, uh, Mr. Finkelstein to, uh, representative of the property owner to, uh, make a request to the council.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, as you all may recall from before, this is about a 40-acre site. Um, the, it doesn't really, as, uh, as it has been redeveloped, I think it was originally permitted in 2016. Now, none of the inverters and none of the solar panels will be in the Hamlet ETJ. The city of Hamlet's, uh, ETJ does, however, uh, encompass a, what is likely to be a temporary sediment basin. And obviously, your usual special use or conditional use permitting issues with respect to inverters and panels and the like doesn't really apply to a temporary settlement, a sediment basin. Um, but out of an abundance of caution, uh, I think the wise thing to do is to come to you all to either get approval or explicit, uh, recognition that no approval is necessary, um, with respect to this, uh, this sediment basin. Uh, that obviously in just about every, the state basically requires everybody in any kind of, you know, uh, project of 40 acres like this to, to have. So I'm, it seems to me that either you all ought to, uh, ought to just, uh, determine that it is not subject to a special use permit and one's not required or to just go ahead and, and say that it is fine with the, with the city of Hamlet for this, uh, um, catch basin, which again is likely to be temporary, to be located within the ETJ. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I trust in your packet, there's a copy of the site plan. If not, I've got that that I can hand up. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Uh, how big would the basin be, Oscar Sellers?
That is a great question, the answer to which I should know. Um, and I'm not sure that I do know. Um, using this scale, it would look like it's about, uh, uh, the area reserved for the potential settlement basin on this plan, uh, uh, is, I would say about, uh, 200 feet by 75 feet. And, uh, again, that would be the total area of the, if, if this, uh, this catch basin, this settlement, uh, basin is required, it would be significantly less than one would think that entire area, but that would be the maximum.
Well, Oscar Sellers again. How long, you said temporary. How temporary are you talking about?
Again, it is possible that it won't be necessary at all. Um, and I, as a non-engineer, as a dumb lawyer, I don't know how temporary temporary is. Um, but, uh, that is what the engineers have indicated to us is that there's this, uh, a potential. I, I think you all ought to look at it as something that might, you know, that temporary may, may be a considerable period of time. So I don't think I would put any particular stock on it being temporary. The real issue here is that this is a, you know, a sediment basin, not the kinds of things that, you know, a conditional use or a special use permit is, you know, the, the standards don't even really make any sense with respect to it.
Well, on the runoff, Oscar Sellers, again, on the runoff on the settlement, would it, on the wastewater is what you're talking about. Is that right? Runoff from the prop- from the property. And what kind of danger would that put to the community or the, uh?
Essentially none. Again, this runoff, uh, is expected to be just in the construction phase. Um, and as you can see from the, the, the plat, there's a, you know, there's, you all require a fairly significant setback way before you even get to the settlement, to this, uh, this sediment basin. So there is no risk to the public.
Well, what, well, what would it do though to the, to the, to the, uh, uh, neighbors out there in form of insects or be settling in and water standing in the basin?
Um, again, those, all of those kinds of issues are, are, are regulated by the state. Um, I don't think it would have a significant, you know, this is not a detention pond. It's a sediment basin. So I don't think there would be any kind of significant issue.
Significant, but any kind of inconvenience or anything, it would be, it would, uh, would it, uh, interfere with their way of life or their, uh, everyday living?
No, sir. Uh, I can't see how a settlement, sediment basin would do that.
Yeah. That's a pretty big size, a pretty good sized basin for the runoff. But that, I mean, even though for 40 acres, that's a pretty good size, uh, that's a good sized basin.
And it's, you know, 75 foot by 200 foot.
I understand.
You know, it's gonna be less than that. That's right.
But it'd still be, in my opinion, if I were living there in that area, it'd be a significant basin to me if I was a neighbor to it.
Well, again, you wouldn't be able to see it because of the required, uh, um,
Regulations on the environmental and that, that would, but knowing it's there. What about the danger to the, uh, if they have children, would, how much danger would it be? How deep would it go for?
Again, and, you know, this is not designed to be a sediment, uh, you know, a detention pond. So it, you know, the expectation would be there wouldn't be, you know, it'd be very, very shallow and most of the time, there would be no water in it.
This area.
Would be right now.
Yeah, yeah. Last year was, I guess, the third wettest year in the history of the state, so.
Well, if, who would be, uh, Oscar Sellers again, who would be responsible for it? If there were, it would become a problem to the cost of it. Who would be responsible for repairing it?
Whoever owned the project, which, which, you know, would be Strata, my client.
Yeah.
If, sorry.
Abby Covington is, would this property be fenced?
Yes, ma'am.
So the basin's fenced? Basin would be located within the fence?
Actually, the basin, I think, is outside of the fence, but inside of the, uh, of the vegetative barrier.
But not inside.
But not inside the.
That's, you're right. It's not in it.
If, if I may, um, excuse me, Matt Christian, um, if I may, uh, I anticipated, uh, the request and I've done some research and I, I'd like to clarify a few options that I think are pretty, pretty clear. Um, and you keep me in line, um, to make sure I don't get out of bounds here. So I think option one is, uh, at least before this meeting tonight, the property owner has requested us, um, to consider deferring to the county zoning, uh, totally. And that, and that's permissible under a new section of general statute that's kinda novel to everybody. Um, the second option would be to amend the existing permit at your discretion, whether that be the fence, the removal of the pond that is temporary, things of that nature, whatever your concerns are. I think that you can, I think that there is, um, that the council has latitude to amend the existing special use permit to clarify their concerns. Um, and then the final option would be to essentially, um, I guess, uh, I mean, there, this one kinda splits, but, you know, they could have to go through and it could, we could require them to go through a new special use permit process. Um, but that, they would also have to do that on the county side, um, to basically kinda throw the existing permit, uh, if they don't wanna exercise it, uh, away and, and get a new permit, um, which, um, those are the kind of the three options. So, uh, just to recap, one would be to defer to the county zoning, uh, two would be to amend the existing permit at your discretion, and three would be to leave the permit as it stands. And, uh, if the property owner wants a different permit, they can, you know, submit that, that permit request.
And I would respectfully request for all kinds of reasons, including your time in this pandemic and the, the situation that we find ourselves in, that you do either one or two of those three options.
Abby Covington again, um, could we amend our permit to require that the pond be placed within the fencing?
Sure. I think so.
Okay. So that would alleviate any safety concerns if there are any. I don't know anything about the depth. Do you know anything about the depth, anticipated depth of the pond?
My understanding is that most of the time, it would be empty. Um, and, you know, I don't have the engineering on exactly, you know, depending on whether it's Noah's flood or something significantly less, um, you know, the, uh, the idea would be that it would be very shallow under what we would ordinarily expect.
But we could amend the permit to require that it be placed within the fenced area.
Certainly. And from my experience, this is Matt Christian, from my experience, um, most of these ponds are large because they're shallow. Uh, they're usually surrounded by a usually three-foot-high, um, uh, erosion control fence that's temporary and they have some outlets for, uh, excess water to go over. So, um, so you could amend it to, um, put the, require the, the fence to be, or the, the pond to be within the fence. Um, alternatively, and one or the other would be my recommendation to require the fence surround the pond or simply require the, the, by, um, the pond is temporary. It is not required for the operation of the site. I think you could also, um, consider that the pond, if they don't wanna move the fence, then the pond could be removed. I mean, it's just, if it's temporary.
I meant, we require that they fence the area containing the solar panels, don't we?
Yeah.
Alright, could we, rather than worry about the, the temporary fence, could we not place the pond within the permanent fencing?
I believe you could.
And Abby Covington again, one question that you just brought up for, in the event where the pond were to be insufficient to handle, you said there would be a provision, there's, there's runoff in there. Where would this go?
Right.
Those, those, those sediment, if I, I mean, I'm not an engineer and, and I don't believe we have the engineers in the room tonight, but, um, these are designed to meet, um, state specifications for sites that are of a certain acreage that are being disturbed. And they're, they're engineered to, to sp- specifics that I don't, I'm not entirely educated on.
But I'm saying, would this runoff onto somebody else's property or would it be retained within the 40 acres of this pond?
I think it is designed.
Whose property is it gonna affect?
It, it should remain on the 40 acres. That's the reason why there's the detention, the temporary, uh, sediment pond in the first place.
Well, Oscar Sellers, how much can, that, how much can the landscape around this 40 acres absorb? It's gonna be a runoff. How much can the landscape, how much landscape can absorb this runoff?
Well, again, there is the requirement of the vegetative buffer around the entire project. So, you know, and again, with 40 acres, this is not like a, you know, building, a, a building where you have a lot of impervious surface. There's, in a solar farm, there's not that much impervious surface, so you're not gonna have, you know, you built a Walmart, you typically have a detention pond. But since there's so little runoff because there's so little, you know, impervious surface, all that's necessary is this temporary, uh, sediment basin.
And the environmental agency would be in charge and be inspected. How, how often would, would it be inspected?
You know, that, that varies based on our legislature's funding of, uh, the, the department. And, um, you know, the truth of the matter is, it, um, this is temporary and because of that, you know, it will be inspected, you know, in its lifetime, early on. And one's expectation is that, you know, it wouldn't require, you know, it wouldn't be there active long enough to require a second one. But quite frankly, I don't know what, what the, uh, what the funding will be or what the, the time periods will be between inspections.
Would the, Oscar Sellers again, well, would there be for the adjoining property owners, would there be a contract to give a certain amount of time for the basin to be removed or, uh, dissolved?
I don't underst-
Understanding, how long would it, that you say temporary, could, would it be a contract, uh, how long they could keep the basin there to the adjoining properties if it became a problem?
Well, if it became a problem, that would be an issue. Uh, but no, I, I think typically with respect to the state permitting and the like, if you've got a, a, a settlement basin, you, you know, it, it is allowed to remain, um, unless it becomes a problem.
Abby Covington, I'd like to make a recommendation that we amend the permit and require that the sediment pond be placed within the permanent fencing that is required for the panels themselves and therefore protect anyone from the pond. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to throw the whole process out at this point in time.
Well, as they have environmental problems, county.
Well, if they have an environmental problem, the county health department would take care of it.
Well, and it does, it protects any animals, kids or whatever from being in the pond. And hopefully, we won't be this wet for the rest of our lives.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Not a motion.
That is a motion.
All right, have a motion by Abby Covington?
I'll second the motion.
Have a second by Mr. Martin. Uh, I'll go around, uh, see, all in favor, uh?
Oscar Sellers, I, uh, uh, yes, a.
Okay, Ms. Covington?
Yes, Abby Covington, yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Maury Stewart, yes.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
Eddie Martin, yes.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. McQueen?
Jesse McQueen, yes.
Okay, all in favor, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you for all, yes.
Take good care.
Thank you.
Okay, we have before us now the, uh, adjusted utility policy, uh, Mr. Christian?
Yes, sir, mayor, uh, this policy, uh, going back to our meeting, I believe in November, we had some discussion about utility adjustments. Um, and at the direction of council, I did some research and prepared a draft policy for your consideration. Um, the policy itself establishes some general guidelines. It also, um, has a specific policy, procedures and definitions to help give clarity to our utility adjustments that we provide to our customers in the event of, um, explained leaks, unexplained leaks and things of that sort. Um, it just provides some clarity and I think is a, um, a good foundation. And I welcome your, your comments or your questions about the draft policy.
This is Jesse McQueen?
Yes, sir.
One question I have, does this cover the secondary watering meters as well as the primary house meter?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, Mr. McQueen, uh, I want to, um, it doesn't, it, it does, yes. I think that any, um, as long as the leak, um, in terms of the volume that was lost and the section of the policy, uh, whether it was a preventable leak, um, or an, a non-accessible leak, um, regardless of what type of account it is, I believe irrigation is one of the things that started this discussion, would qualify.
And that's like one time a year, Mr. McQueen.
Okay, so basically it'd be the same thing as the, the primary meter?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
I, I, I think that sounds good, but I would also like to consider, uh, credit for the people that had this issue back in October or November to adjust their bill accordingly. Um, due to the fact that they had a, a leak that was not, um, any fault of their own, they were out of town. And, um, I, I personally feel like that this should have been included, you know, in the existing policy, you know, like. So I would like to see, um, that credit added for that particular, I think it's the Smith family.
That would, that would, uh, apparently be, uh, that would be a separate motion, I believe.
If I may make a recommendation, mayor and Mr. McQueen, uh, we could just, um, if we could narrow in on an effective date on the policy, I think that would, um, be the vehicle to get us where we want to be in terms of those, uh, individual issues that you mentioned. Um, so, uh, we could make it October first or something like that, uh, this policy could be retroactive.
Okay, yeah, that, that sounds, that sounds good to me, I'd make a motion, we approve this policy, uh, retro to, uh, October first.
October the first of twenty twenty.
Maury Stewart, second.
Sir?
A second, Maury Stewart.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. McQueen to approve this with effective date of October the first of twenty twenty. Have a second by, by Mr. Stewart, is there any further discussion on it? If not, I'll go around the room then, uh, for an approval on it, Ms. Covington?
Abby Covington, aye.
Oscar Sellers, aye.
Okay.
Maury Stewart, aye.
Eddie Martin, aye.
Okay.
Jesse McQueen, aye, and I would just like to say thank you to, uh, the city manager for compiling this information for us and, and putting this on the forefront so we can get it, uh, straight down, added to our, uh, policy, thank you.
Very good, that, that kind of clarifies that we've, you know, we've always tended to be very lenient on this to try to help people that had these water leaks they didn't know about. And this was an area that had not been clear, clarified, so I'm, I'm glad that's taken care of, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we have before us a, uh, policy. And in, in order to remain eligible to receive federal funds, the Federal Highway Administration and the Department of Transportation are requiring all municipalities to have an officially adopted Title VI policy adopted by the council. And you have the, uh, resolution policy in front of you, what are your wishes on that?
Move that we adopt.
Okay, Ms. Covington has made a motion to adopt the policy?
Oscar Sellers, second.
Okay, and Mr. Sellers, second, I'll go around the room, uh, for approval, Ms. Covington?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McQueen?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor? Got a lot of items on here tonight. Okay, okay, due to, as, as with other things, uh, due to the COVID, we have needed to make some adjustments to our, uh, sick leave policy. And, uh, we'll let Mr. Christian go with that right now.
Yes, sir, mayor, thank you, um, as, as we all know, the emergency paid sick leave of eighty hours was included in the original CARES Act legislation that was passed in, I believe, March, April, or April of twenty twenty. That, um, law expired on December, the last day of twenty twenty. Um, and this resolution before you, this policy, um, sorry, is, um, an extension of the emergency paid sick leave portion, um, of that original act. Um, I think that that, um, extension of the emergency paid sick leave is important for both our employees and our organization. Um, I want to encourage people to take the necessary precautions. And so far, uh, we, we, uh, I think like everyone at this point, we either have had some cases or know some people that have had some cases. And we want to make sure we're being careful and we're providing the right, uh, safety net for our folks to, to have the confidence to go out and get tested instead of feeling like they have to come to work, um, and potentially endangering their teams. So, um, with that, I, I request the extension of the, the CARES Act policy, that section of it.
Okay, at this time I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion that we move that extension.
Okay, Mr. Stewart has made a motion.
Oscar Sellers, second.
Mr. Sellers has seconded, I'll ask for a vote, we're all in favor, Ms. Covington?
Um, may I ask a question?
You certainly may, go ahead.
Is this an indefinite extension?
No, ma'am, thank, thank you for that question, it is, um, currently proposed, this extension would, um, expire on June the thirtieth, twenty twenty. Um, uh, it, it, at the, you know, hopefully by that point, we won't need to extend it anymore, is my sincere hope, um, but if. That's right, yes, twenty twenty-one, uh, my mistake, uh, but hopefully by that time comes, we, uh, we won't, um, be in a position, um, in our community to need to extend a policy like that, is my sincere hope, should we? I think, uh, you know, we can take the incremental approach and deal with it then.
Right.
It is, yeah, it's in the, the last page there, under, uh, general rules.
I was looking for it quickly and I couldn't find it.
Okay.
Quite all right.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, I'll ask for a vote, uh, of approval, Ms. Covington?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart? Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McQueen?
Aye.
All in favor? The next item of business is a proclamation for Martin Luther King Day, which is January the eighteenth of twenty twenty-one. Whereas Monday, January the eighteenth of twenty twenty-one has been designated as a national holiday honoring the late Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, an American who dedicated his life to the fundamental principles of freedom, opportunity and equal justice for all. And whereas today, all Americans benefit from Dr. King's work and his legacy of courage, dignity and moral clarity. And whereas on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial, Dr. King spoke passionately of his dream for America, whereby all citizens would be judged by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin. Where all citizens would enjoy the riches of freedom and the security of justice and where the doors of opportunity would be open to all mankind. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bill Bayless, the mayor of the city of Hamlet, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Monday, January the eighteenth of twenty twenty-one as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day in the city of Hamlet and encourage all citizens to observe this day with appropriate activities and programs that honor the memory and legacy of Dr. King, proclaim this twelfth day of January, twenty twenty-one. They have done an excellent job with their planning so far, uh, it's been a bad situation, but they've taken everything into consideration and I think it'll go off quite well, so that's, uh, bless them. Okay, council, we have before us at this time the tax releases. Am I to read correctly on here that the total, uh, property tax release is thirty-six hundred dollars and eighty-five cents? Is that correct? Okay, tell me what it is.
Did you hear you?
The releases are actually thirteen hundred and thirty-five dollars. The refunds are combined into that to total the thirty-six hundred.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of information there.
Yes, a lot.
Yeah, thirteen hundred and dollars and thirty-five cents, council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion, we approve the tax release. Eddie Martin.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Martin to approve the tax releases.
Maury Stewart, second.
Okay, Mr. Stewart has seconded, and, uh, is there any further discussion on the tax releases? If not, I'll take a vote on the approval, Ms. Covington?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McQueen?
Aye.
Okay, all, all in favor? And now to the budget amendments. And I'm not gonna go over all of those, but did you have a comment on them? Neil, or Mr. Christian, who's one?
No, sir, we, uh, happy to answer any questions, I think generally speaking, a lot of these are, um, uh, pretty routine shifting of funds as, uh, necessary in the budget, certainly we've had to adapt some things this year. Uh, we've had some unexpected things pop up and, uh, overall, it's, it's just kind of cleaning house. Um, and also, uh, make sure that we have funds in place, at least, um, as we see it right now, to get us through the rest of the year and, and finish the projects we have on our, on our plate.
Very good, council, what are your wishes?
Move that we approve, Abby Covington.
Okay.
Oscar Sellers, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, have any further comments on the budget amendments? If not, I'll take a vote on it, uh, Ms. Covington?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Can, I, Oscar Sellers, aye, can I ask a question?
Yes.
It says here on Parks and Recreation, a monthly report, they maintain the ball, parks, fields and gymnasium, isn't the gymnasium closed?
Yes, sir, but it still does require maintenance.
It required on it.
Yeah, I mean, they have to make sure that the facility is at least kept in working order.
Okay, just a question on it.
Okay, did I have an eye from you?
Yes, you do.
Okay, Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McQueen?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor? All right, at this time, we'll, uh, go to the, uh, comments of the city manager.
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor, um, I do have several notes, uh, it's been, you know, I missed last month and I apologize for my absence. Um, first of all, uh, regarding code enforcement, um, well, before I mention that, I want to mention, in the end of twenty twenty, uh, was a wild year for everyone. But I do want to make a special note to commend our city staff for, um, how safe they were at work. Uh, we only had two minor injuries, uh, at work this year and we're always trying to minimize, uh, um, injuries in the workplace and make sure that people are working safe and have the necessary equipment to do so. Um, so I wanted to just congratulate them on that success and, um, and, and make sure that, uh, we appreciate that their hard work on that, in that regard. Um, in terms of code enforcement, um, we, a couple of months ago, um, made a motion or passed the ordinance to demo, demo an abandoned house, um, that demo has been received, it was roughly sixteen thousand, uh, dollars to demo, demo that house. Um, and that is, uh, an effort to clean up our community. Uh, I, I must also mention that in that time and, and in this year, uh, we have had through, um, other means, more of reaching out to folks and trying to make sure that property owners understand the violations, we have had three other homes be demolished by the property owners at no cost to the city. Um, in addition to that, uh, one property, um, that is on, or two, one property that is owned, that, um, that's slated to be demolished, um, is being funded by the same property owner selling another one of his properties to be upfit. So we're constantly working on these things and I want to commend, uh, Kim Lyerly for her efforts and making sure we're being proactive in that regard and, and cleaning up our community. Um, uh, the railroad is gonna have a couple of closures, Bridges Street, um, on January the twenty-seventh, uh, Main Street, February the fourteenth, this is for routine maintenance. Um, it will be closed possibly for two to five days and signage will be in place to, um, um, for detour routes. And that, that information has been communicated to our emergency responders, uh, as well as our public works department. So if anyone is traveling in those areas, that's just routine maintenance, if you see those, those railroad crossings closed in that time. Um, I, I received an email from the finance director of Richmond County, um, he informed us that some of the CARES Act money had gone unspent by other communities and had been reallocated, um, uh, the portion reallocated to the city of Hamlet was roughly, uh, eighteen hundred dollars. Um, and that was from the CARES Act, so we did, we did receive that amount from the county. Um, another, um, I guess, positive thing that we had right before the end of the year was a, a gentleman, Mr. Jan Solahin, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly, uh, made a four thousand dollar donation to the city, um, as a, as a benefactor, he wanted, he said that his, um, he has a solar farm in the city and, uh, you may have met him in the past when he was going through that process. And he contacted me and asked me what our needs were and, uh, made a donation to help us, um, you know, provide some response and adaptations to particularly the COVID, uh, pandemic. So, uh, I'd like to thank him for his consideration and his generosity. Uh, finally, uh, I know that the county health department is rolling out the vaccines. Uh, you can find out more information by going, reaching out to the county health department, whether it be on the phone or their website. I believe they're, uh, entering phase one B soon. Um, so, uh, right now, folks eligible are, uh, over seventy-five, but, uh, coming soon, hopefully more folks will be eligible and you can contact the Richmond County Health Department to, uh, get more information on that and hopefully schedule your appointment to get vaccinated. Um, that's my comments and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the manager? Okay, if not, we will, uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we will move along to comments of council and, uh, Ms. Covington?
Um, I don't have any comments, Mr. Sellers.
Okay, Mr. Sellers?
Yes, I do, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy new year and all the citizens of Hamlet are safe and, uh, uh, healthy new year. And I'd like to see them more participation from our citizens to come to the meetings and let us hear from them about their input of what we could do to help their lives and help the city of Hamlet. That's the end of my comments.
Hmm, very good, thank you, Mr. Stewart?
Um, of, of course, always thanking all our city employees through COVID nineteen, you know, haven't missed a beat. I just, I definitely want to thank the city manager for, um, helping us through this COVID paid, uh, sick leave. I definitely think that's something that will, will benefit everyone, everyone's been affected through COVID, whether it's directly or indirectly, family members, whatever, I think it's a good thing for the city employees to continue that. Um, thank you for the MLK proclamation, want to invite everyone out to the, uh, Monday's celebration for the MLK. It's a Zoom celebration, it has been presented in the paper, I believe by Gavin, and he's gonna run it again as well. So please, uh, look for that in the paper, join the Zoom link, and it's a celebration for all people as MLK stands for, you know, for everyone. And just thank everyone, happy new year to everybody, um, and thank you again.
Only bad thing about it is. The only bad thing about a Zoom meeting, we miss all that good food.
Absolutely.
It's always good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Mr. McQueen?
Yes, sir, just one quick thing. Um, reading the paper over the past couple of weeks, some of the regional areas, I know that Robinson County, Scotland County, Moore County, and the surrounding areas, um, I've read several articles about, uh, local hospitals in those areas being overwhelmed and, um, not able to take patients and the others. Um, and I would just like to ask unanimous consent from the council members to authorize our city manager to contact the Department of Health and Human Services in Raleigh to just get an update on what's going on with the status of the, the Hamlet Hospital that they had leased back in March. Um, I did some research, it's my understanding they've got a, a, a hold on that facility through March of twenty twenty-one. And, I mean, I personally would just like to know what's going on with that. There was a lot of money spent in that, in that facility to hold it for, um, the COVID issues, and if there is a need for it, do they have any expectations of, uh, letting us know if, you know, if that's gonna be something that they're gonna open, or gonna, uh, basically nothing happened with that facility? Um, I don't know if there's any support of, by the other council members to get those questions answered, but I would sure like to find out.
Alright, we'll have, we'll have Mr. Christian contact and then give us information about what's going on.
Um, Mayor Bayless?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Abby Covington. I checked with, um, uh, some of the personnel that were responsible for setting the hospital up and spent the week here getting it ready. I contacted them and asked them, because I had heard that they were considering opening this facility. She said that at this point, they had not given any indication that they were ready to do this. The issue is that they've been able to shift, the problem when they say that they're overloaded is that they have not designated beds as COVID beds. And so they, when they shift this designation, then it expands the available beds. So, they have not seen the need to open the facility, and she said she had not heard that they were considering opening it, in, opening it in the near future.
Yeah, and I also understand that the National Guard's working on that project, or they're on standby for it.
That was who I spoke with.
Oh, okay, good, very good. Did you hear that, Mr. McQueen?
Yes, I did. Uh, I appreciate that discovery. Thanks so much for giving us that information.
We'll stay on top of it. Very good. Alright, what else you got?
I don't have anything else.
Sir?
I don't have anything.
Oh, okay, very good, thank you. Uh, of course, wanna wish everyone a happy new year, and I hope that our year is, uh, is getting ready to get better. Um, appreciate the city employees, they just, they've really done a bang-up job, what with everything over Christmas. And, uh, today, uh, saw Mr. Yates and his associate out on Highland Avenue cleaning up trash out there. I guess the, the grass has died down or whatever, but things are looking so trashy. I don't understand why people have to throw the stuff out of their vehicles. But, uh, they're doing a great job getting that up. They work right along, so that's graciously appreciated. The, uh, operation, as I have seen it over at the hospital now this week, they're set up, doing the, uh, anyone over seventy-five years old just have to call in, get a, uh, appointment, and, uh, they are just really doing a bang-up job. And, uh, I don't know that we could say anything nicer for them when we see the problems that other people are having. And, uh, so I appreciate that. And, uh, just want everybody to stay safe and, uh, again, a happy new year, and that'll be all that I'll have at this time. And, uh, at this time, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session per General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, three and six, attorney-client privilege and personnel.
Abby Covington move that we go into closed session for the North Carolina General Statute.
Okay.
Oscar Sellers, second's that.
Okay, I got a second from Mr. Sellers. Uh, do I have any other comments on it? None other at this time. I'll take a vote. Ms. Covington?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart? Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McQueen?
Aye.
Okay, very good. At this time, then we'll be in closed session. I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Sellers, second by Ms. Covington. Uh, all in favor, Ms. Covington? Mr. Sellers? Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McQueen?
Uh, before we leave, I just wanna thank everybody for going to extra miles and with the extra seizures to allow me to call into the meeting. I really appreciate it.
Well, we hope everybody gets along alright. Definitely. If you need anything, call.
Yes, sir, call. Okay, alright. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
And thank you to the news media.